I'm gonna take a bunch of stuff off the boat and I'm gonna try to get that done. Give me a day through the morning.
Yeah.
I'm gonna try to get it done in a few days.
Yep.
It's supposed to be pretty grainy, you think often?
Yeah, I know.
Try to help get all the sales off.
Yep.
Yeah, we've done it on the dock before. I like doing it on the dock, but it was just very old. But maybe frank upon how much weight it's on there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Is it nice to pull that?
No, but I mean the whole just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know how heavy that was. Yeah, I mean parking lot.
Yeah.
Just have to look at the light going. See, if you guys aren't too busy, I'd like to pressure wash it across the road. If you are, I'll make sure I get a pressure washer. At least a rough one.
Yep.
I'd rather dump all that stuff in the gravel park and flush across the road.
Sorry, Sarah, this one isn't even quick.
I know.
Yeah, well, that'd be great.
Some are better than others.
Looks like it's pretty grassed up. Didn't, hasn't been following over here.
I bet you have.
We have enough chairs for everybody. Make Cooley sit all by himself in the back.
Jesse told me you were coming. I said, he better ring his checkbook this time. I told him. He only got away with it last time. All right, I've got five o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order today, Monday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, we have Selectman Howdy Goodwin, Mackenzie Dewitt, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, Town Manager Jesse Dunbar, and Town Clerk Sarah Abbott. Eric just called and said he won't make it this evening.
Make a motion to excuse Eric Eene from tonight's meeting?
Second.
It's been moved in second to excuse Eric Eene from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change? All right, first, we have a public hearing titled, Short-Term Rental Licensing Ordinance. Don't want to put a time on when we start it. We will go into the public hearing at five oh three. First, I want to start off by saying that I'm sure there's a lot of strong opinions, difference of opinions. Please be respectful of each other. Please state your name before you speak, just so we have it on record. And I'll try not to put a time limit on how long people talk, but just try to be as brief as possible so we can get through everybody. And to start, I want to make sure everyone knows to fully disclose that I have one short-term rental. My family also has two year-round rentals, so I understand both sides of it. And also Kevin has two short-term rentals, if he does. So I'll make sure everyone knows that before we start. All right, my guest, Noel, would you like to summarize where we are and how we got to there? Or actually, I can summarize how we got here, maybe, before you start.
Yeah, what do you mean that?
So we were approached in the spring, the Select Board was, with a, we won't call it a petition, but a more of a letter from thirty-six residents stating that they would like to see there be a registration on short-term rentals. So we asked the Planning Board to go ahead and work on that, which they have done. And the result of this is what you see in front of us. It's something that came from this group of people with their idea, and we're just following through with it. Now, Noel.
Okay, so, thank you, everybody. My name is Noel Musson. I am a planning consultant and worked with the Planning Board and the Board of Select on developing the short-term rental licensing ordinance. The short-term rental ordinance, in my experience, is a really kind of uniquely developed for towns as they think about the kind of policy options that they want to start to address as they relate to short-term rentals. So there's a lot of opinions on one side or the other. The directive that we had, or I had, in developing this ordinance is really to create a simple registration ordinance. So for the purposes of this document, really creating, just as I said, a simple registration process. The primary objective at this time, as discussed at the Planning Board level, was really to collect basic information on the number of short-term rentals in town, the location, the type of short-term rentals, so that we have, can have informed discussions about short-term rentals in town. So this ordinance creates that registration process and that licensing process. It does include a few standards, such as making sure that your taxes on the property are paid, or that you have smoke detectors, or that you have existing parking, those kinds of standards. There are some enforcement provisions in the ordinance. There are fees that need to be developed by the Board, which can be kept relatively low. I think there's been some preliminary discussions about fees, but no recommendation on fees at this point, so I'll let you guys weigh in on that. The Planning Board did not make a recommendation on fees. And then, that's pretty much it. That's what the ordinance does. It asks people to register and have, there's no limit. It doesn't place any limits or constraints on short-term rentals. It really only asks that you register or get a license to help the town collect the data they need. And yes, there are locations in town. There are other ways to collect some of the data that is being looked for through air DNA or doing internet searches or stuff, but they're not as specific as this type of information would be for this town. So happy to answer any questions about the ordinance and leave the comments to the Board. Anything else you'd like me to share? Think about that. It's pretty straightforward.
That's good. Yeah, thank you, Noel.
I don't know, Jesse has extra copies over here, I believe, who over there got a copy?
I must have missed anything.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Paul, can you comment on what other communities that you and I have done? What other communities have done? Well, the town of Bar Harbor is the only one. The town of Bar Harbor has created a licensing process whereby, actually, regulatory process. I'm not asking you what Bar Harbor is, or maybe others in you who know a lot more about it than I do, but they actually have a cap on the number of short-term rentals. And it's differentiated by depending on location and type of short-term rental. The town of Mount Desert has explored the option of having a short-term rental license, licensing ordinance. And they're in the process of making some revisions to that and potentially having some discussions at the next town. There are no other towns on the way out that have short-term rental licensing restrictions or ordinances. I think Bangor just adopted one. Stony Tim, I believe, adopted one. Some other community of similar nature have already adopted them. Any other questions? Technical question, yes?
Not having thoroughly read through this, and I want to apologize in advance. I've just had ear surgery, so I can't hear very well.
Okay.
Somebody may have already asked this question.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll try to speak.
Is it provided in here that only residents of Tremont, Bass Harbor, or whatnot can have short-term rentals? So it's just property owners?
Just property owners, yep, yep. Now, there are ways, so again, I'm gonna preface some of the answers by saying that the directive that we were working under was, let's make a very simple ordinance. So this ordinance just applies to all property owners. There are some, there is, there are some other models that you could explore at some point in the future where, where you create, and actually, you may be doing this in the town of Mount Desert, creating some structure that says if you're, if this is your primary residence, we're gonna call it one thing. If it's like not your primary residence, we could call it something else, but that is not what this does. This is a, it's a, we try, I think the goal for the Planning Board was to keep it as simple as possible. Making, like, the idea being if it's as simple as possible and it passes, then more people are likely to comply with it, and we're gonna get the data that we're looking for. Yeah?
Do you want us to state our name?
Oh, we're not quite to that. This is just questions for Noel at this point.
So what data are you all looking? That's, that's my curiosity. I can see, I can see wanting to make sure that the properties are safe, which a lot of this covers.
Yep.
But, but what data are you guys looking for?
Yeah, so in the, in the, if the licensing process, we get data for the number of short-term rentals, the location of short-term rentals. Some information on, like, is it a, then we can correlate that with, to try to answer questions about where they are in the neighborhood, which neighborhoods they're in, are there concentrations of short-term rentals in certain areas? There's a lot of, like, spin-off information that can be useful in sort of land use planning decisions or thinking about it in the future. Mainly, you know, where, where they are, how many there are, what kinds of units they are. Are they apartments? Are they rentals that are in your, in your house that you just rented a bedroom? With all the different kinds of.
What's the expectation? Is it to, to think about longer-term housing issues and things like that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to speak for the thirty-six people that actually wrote that letter, but I, in my experience, the genesis of a lot of short-term rental discussions relates affordability and availability of housing. So housing is on a continuum, right? So if you purchase a house, that means that, in particular, if there's a house that's not available for somebody else to buy, for example. And I think this data could be useful in understanding whether or not and how short-term rentals contribute to, you know, the affordability issues that we're all facing here in the past. That's, that's one.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Thank you.
So are you gonna be collecting whether the short-term rentals are seasonal or year-round structures?
That will be part of the application process. Yep. Yes. And I think, you know, Tremont, we can all recognize, what's interesting about these public meetings is to also try to understand, you know, people's concerns and what, what they feel about a particular ordinance, but also like what you're asking, you know, are these seasonal rentals that have been seasonal rentals for generations? Or are they structures that have been used, you know, more recently as a year-round resident that just got bought and turned into a rental because there's a business opportunity there? You know, in the land use planning world, we can also start to think about, you know, are rentals becoming more like business rentals or are they actually just rentals, those kinds of things?
Can I just say, when you say business rentals, a lot of people are just trying to live in this town, the property taxes, the meal services?
Yep, yep.
So why should we get penalized for that?
Yeah, I'm not making any judgments on that.
That should be more into the comments than that. These are just questions for Noel at this point. Anything he can help clarify, since he's worked great with the Planning Board. Any more questions?
So I got one more.
I didn't, I wasn't even familiar with this until just now, so I unfortunately didn't have any time to review it. Is there, I just did a quick scan of this. I mean, basically, I don't see much in there other than the requirement for licensing and the condition of the licensing. So my question is, is there something that's in there that governs what the people who come? Because these short-term rentals, I can tell you, my road is probably the first that has received a very significant, significant concentration of short-term rental units. And I think there's, there's stuff that happens in our area that probably doesn't happen in other areas that have to do with things like supervision, with owners being on-site or very nearby as opposed to being out-of-town businesses that just come in and spend a lot of money driving prices up for everybody. So is there, is there some notion that that's gonna be expanded upon as far as? If you remember, Jesse, I asked you this question a couple of years ago. For example, there's twenty people getting drunk in the backyard, thirty feet from my bedroom window, you know, with an open fire throwing gasoline on it, which is actually happening, not making it up, not an exaggeration. And twenty feet away, there's a two-hundred-gallon propane, propane tank. And their generator, which has a line that goes to it, is maybe fifteen feet away from this fireplace. So my question is.
Hang on just a sec. I think we're getting more into comments than we are questions for Noel, and I just want to make sure that we're, is this a question for?
Okay, so my question is, does this go beyond simply, this is how you go about it. Here's a license, and if you're in violation of the license, we're gonna find you. Does this go beyond that to cover what actually happens in terms of what the behavior? I mean, that's, that's probably not the right term, but what I'm saying is, is the impacts that happen in the neighborhood, which we're already seeing on our road and has been going on, goes way beyond just what happens in that one short-term rental.
So your question is to Noel, then, is there anything in there about behavior of?
Not necessarily behavior. What I'm asking is, is are there gonna be additional controls, rules, regulations, whatever? For example, so Har Harbor, for example, the, you know, they don't allow that kind of stuff to, you know, people sitting there, you know, open fires and getting drunk with loud noise, sound systems or whatever. They don't allow that. That's an example. I'm not saying, because everybody likes to have a good time, and I'm, I do as well. But is there going to be something that protects the people like myself, who came here forty-some years ago when all I ever heard was the wind in the trees and, you know, occasionally fleas out in the harbor? And that's why I bought, to be here, to begin with. But that's gone forever. I understand that. That's gone forever.
All right, let's, let's let Noel answer the question.
I'm gonna answer that, two parts. First part is the easy part, which is, this is a very, very simple ordinance. So as you indicated, there really isn't anything in there that, say, if you have a bunch of complaints and you want to go to the Board of Select and try to make it so that that, these people, the license holder, can't get their license renewed. There really isn't anything in the ordinance that deals with that. However, the data that you can get from having these, having the license will give you, like you're indicating, you know, your road is the, is a concentration of short-term rentals. We'll be able, the town, I should say, will be able to understand that concentration and then start to look at whether or not land uses are appropriate, are appropriately thought about through something.
Well, and again, I didn't intend to go off on this, but this is a very important question from my point of view. This is a good example. And this is what I asked Jesse a couple of years ago. These kids come in.
Yep.
They're there for a week. They do their thing. Oops, somebody starts a fire. And it spreads, and it damages the neighbor's place, or burns it down or whatever. Who specifically is liable for it? And, you know, this whole thing that, well, you know, once these guys jump, and the rubber burns, and they're out of there forever, that may or may not, you know, that leaves the people next door to a fight. So that's an example of what I'm asking about.
Sure.
Is there something implicit about what happens as a consequence of that property being used as rental in the event of something like that?
Yeah, yeah. There really isn't anything in this ordinance that is that specific.
Any other questions? Just for Noel. Yes, Becky?
I do gather all your information, the people who have written the letter. What is the end goal? What do they want to accomplish once they find out all this data?
So I can't answer that question because I didn't write the letter and I don't represent the people that do. I was asked by the town to write an ordinance here.
Do you have some?
So I think the end result, in my mind, as a planner, thinking about it, is to really help have, this community have an informed discussion with real numbers about what, if any, the short-term rental issues there are. And so without having actual hard data, it's hard to argue that there is a problem, there isn't a problem. You kind of need to know, so you can point to something and say, oh, here's where, here's how many short-term rentals we have. We see a huge concentration of short-term rentals over in this area. We already know this area has some septic issues, so is that a problem for septic systems? Are these things we need to start with the end? I'm just using that as one example, but that's the kind of conversation you can have with actual numbers as opposed to just anecdotal information.
Why isn't it, or Paul?
Why isn't it the what?
Why isn't it all this for all rentals? I mean, if you rent by the month, you still have to have wires, extinguishers, you know, short, smoke detectors. I mean, why do you just say, say, short-term and not just rental area?
Because I think the impact of short-term rentals on the overall housing market is different than if you have a year-round rental. So you can take what was a year-round rental or a year-round house off the market, which contributes to the affordability impacts. And I think, as this gentleman was saying, sometimes, and I used to have rentals too, year-round rentals too, so this is not a universal comment, but sometimes the immediate impact of having a party at a short-term rental might be different than if you have a long-term rental, where people have to take those parties seriously. Again, with provisions, having long, both short-term rentals and a year-round rental, I understand. There's some nuances there. That's one of the reasons.
Everybody have their questions answered for Noel?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer specific questions about the ordinance as well, and education and conversation.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Noel. Is there anything anybody on the Board would like to discuss before we start taking public comment? Okay, once again, just please state your name and just try to make it brief, and we'll try to get to everybody who'd like to make a comment. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lynette Baker. Can you just, can you just say more loudly what's happening right now?
Okay, it's public comment time, so if you'd like to make a comment, please state your name and, and raise your hand, and we'll try to get to everybody. Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Lynette Baker, and in consideration of, and we're still talking about the short-term? We're talking about the?
Yes, yep.
In consideration of this ordinance, if you will. I would, it's hard to say. I'd like fundamentally property owners to kind of be, you know, have autonomy over their property, but I, I can't help but wonder if having part of it be that you must be a resident of Hancock County would prevent, and, you know, people who have no vested interest in this area from buying up properties and just turning them into short-term rentals and having no, just like, no vested interest here. And still protect the property owners who live here, still be able to make that extra income that can make such a big difference in making ends meet around here, you know? I think that, like, that is, I would not want to hold people who, you know, away from that opportunity, but in a lot of places, this is happening where people who don't live here, don't have, don't even plan to use it as a second home, don't even plan to use it as a camp, just buy a property. So that's, I wonder if that would be good to consider having that included to protect the property owners here? I'd be able to protect us, but I guess that's just the comment I wanted to make. I don't have a direct question, except before this closes out, if you could just, I guess, let me know, let us know how this whole thing works. If we discuss it today, are we gonna have a vote on it later? Do we vote on it today? I'm just not sure.
Um, what the, and tell me if you can't hear me clearly. I'll try to speak up even more.
Thank you.
The process usually will go, you have a public hearing. If there are any changes that we would like to make, the Select Board would, we would put it back to the Planning Board. They would make the changes that we would like. Then it will come back to us. Probably not a public hearing at that point, and then we would recommend or not recommend it to go to voters. And then it would be on the ballot in the springtime.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
We would have one more public.
We would, oh, sorry, yes, ma'am, we would have one more public hearing, so.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, sir?
My name is Keith Corson. Just looking at the, the thing here, I would maybe ask the Board to think about in the future, as this is developed more, depending on what the fine structure is. It seems a little onerous on an owner, especially if the fines are fairly high or significant, that those, that those increment on a daily basis. My opinion is, depending on what those fines may be, they might be better off on a larger timeframe, like on a weekly basis or something. Not knowing what those fines may be in the future. I mean, if it's, if it's a ten-dollar fine over ten days, that's not onerous. But if it's a hundred-dollar fine over ten days, that can be, especially with everybody's lives. You know, it may be hard to, if you do get a fine, it may be hard to take care of that, I mean, within, within a couple of days.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Yes, Wood?
Wood Nathan, are you gonna have somebody actually come out and inspect every house, every rental? I mean, to make sure that we have everything? Is it gonna be?
Nope.
You gonna hire a physician for somebody to do this, or the co-board coordinator, or who's gonna do it?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Noel, but I believe what the Planning Board, how they worded this was to say, not sure I had to word it correctly, but it would be on like a complaint basis. So if you had a neighbor or someone who, or there was an issue, you know, with ambulance service, we've heard that before, fire department finding the, where you are, the location, any red flags like that, then it's up to the CEO at this point to go out and inspect it. But they would not inspect individuals without some sort of an issue or a complaint. That answer, Wood?
Yeah, yeah.
Keith, they're the fire chief of the community here. With, to answer your question, we, when we show up, we want thumbs in the air, not fingers. We, we want to be your friends. But so if we identify, like, that you don't have the right address or that evident dangerous, we bring it to your attention. We're not gonna, you know, rat you out to the town. So it's just, that would be the only opportunity where if we were at your property, but we're not gonna go and try to seek out issues or concerns.
Anyone else, yes, ma'am?
Question. So in order to get a registered license, would we need an inspection from the fire department?
No, you would not, not at this time. I'm not sure if you heard what I said before. It was, it's just for, it will be, if there's an issue or a complaint or, or anything, then someone will come out from the town, probably the CEO, and, and address, you know, inspect it, make sure everything is, is how it should be.
I'm just asking, because I have this in my heart, right idea, and this actually, in the first place. So then after that, I just want to know.
Yeah.
My other question, sorry, being sweet. My other question was, so the fees that are collected, what exactly will those be going towards? Why, why would there be a fee if we're not hiring somebody, or what, what are the fees gonna be going?
We have not discussed yet the Select Board. The, the Planning Board left the fee part open and kind of left it up to the Select Board to, to figure that out. So we haven't even had that discussion yet. And in my opinion, I think the fees would just cover any extra work that is being done by the town, whether it be the staff or, you know, filling out registrations and, you know, any extra time. Or if they are asked to come out and inspect, we have to estimate how many times we think it would be and how much it would take away from the, the normal job of the CEO.
So our normal taxes wouldn't cover that?
No, not in.
I don't think any of us are projecting it a fee that's gonna be a problem for anyone. I think they can be relatively minimal.
They can have them. It's not fair. Those thirty-six people are worried about not having a place to live, but if they rent from you, there's still not being taxes, so what are they doing for the town? Where paying it? The owners? From Mary Goias?
Any other? Yes, ma'am.
Edith Cook, for the non-resident property owner. Edith Cook, for the non-resident property owners that have short-term rentals, how are these people going to be informed that they need to be licensing their short-term rentals? Because I know that a lot of these people don't know about a lot of the things in the state, like getting your vehicle inspected. They're just not told that. So is there going to be, are they going to be contacted somehow? And then how is that going to be enforced?
No, that you discussed how they were going to, to be contacted. I mean, I would think a property owner would just be mailed as usual through the town office, as you would like your tax bill. It would be in the same form as the way I would anticipate it to be.
Yes, well, the planning board didn't actually discuss that provision at this point. And there are provisions in the ordinance that sort of deal with that first time around license application process. So that was sort of, that in general was thought about, sort of like the first year being the year where everybody kind of gets set up on it, and then the second year is really where it starts to kick in a bit more. So it's, that's a great question that we need to work through. Yep.
Yes, Margaret.
Marjorie Bunn, I'm wondering if anything is going to be covered by, a lot of people that rent out their house or cottage, might have two bedrooms and rent to eleven people, twelve people. Is there going to be a limit, like your septic system's only good for two bedrooms and so four people? Or is that just going not to be addressed? Who does the occupancy?
Yeah, there is an occupancy.
Two per bedroom?
Yes.
And so who is going to, when, all of once you read on Airbnb, hey, we have two bedrooms and we're going to rent to eleven people. And you go out and say, you can't do that, and here's your fine. How are we going to know the fine basis and all that?
We haven't discussed the fine basis yet.
Okay.
This is very initial. We're just trying to get feedback, people's opinions, how they, you know, any ideas so that we can continue moving forward and, and try to get this the best that we can before it does go to voters.
Okay.
Yes, Becky.
Becky Hopkins, why does the town care what I do with my property? It's mine. Why do you care if it's a long-term rental, a short-term rental? Why does the town care what I want to do with my property? I guess that's all I need to know. Anybody got an answer to that one?
No.
Why they came?
Anybody else have any?
What was your question? Question was, why does the town care what I do with my property? It's mine. Why, why does everybody want to know what I do with my property?
I think it comes down to the thirty-six people that signed the letter and asked us to look into it. I mean, it wasn't the board's collective idea to go into this. We had a group of people that came. When a group of people come to us, we have no choice but to dig into it a little bit. This is basically just to collect information right now. It's not, I mean, it's very vague, it's very bland. But when people ask us, right?
Well, that's usually how it starts. I take a whack at this too.
Yeah, you're right, you're absolutely right.
I just have to ask, the town already cares what you do with your property, because there's zoning in the town. So the town already says, you can do this in these areas and you can't do this in these areas, and you can't do this in these areas. There's, there's zoning in the town, so you already care what somebody else does with their property. This is just one way, this is just a way to try to understand whether or not, what that particular use is and how it might be affecting your property. So fundamentally, short-term rentals are a good thing until they become a bad thing. And so now we're trying to figure out, is, are they a bad thing or not? I'm not making a judgment on that, I'm just saying that's part of what this does. But the town already cares. That's what zoning is. So that's the, the root of the answer.
But we all follow the zoning rules.
So I'm, I'm just answering your question.
Right.
So why, why does the town, the town already cares, because they say you can do these things in these areas and you can't do other things. It's like saying, I'm going to give myself a break and I'll say more, but that's fundamentally what, what that is.
Good answer.
Yes, ma'am.
So what in these letters from these thirty-six people that they wrote, their reasoning? Can you tell us that?
I believe, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, but I'll try to summarize it the best I can. They felt like there was a, an issue with how many short-term rentals there were in town, and they would like to have some sort of a collection of data to figure out how many there actually were, and the, a registration, is that Jesse, I'm sure, Jesse might even have a copy of it.
I did, I picked the letter.
That, that's the, that was the summary of it. And like Mackenzie said, we have, we have a job as selectmen to, to, to look into stuff like that when people bring it to us, so.
And I can understand, but what, but I don't understand their why. Their why is they think there's too many short-term rentals, is that?
Yeah, you would have to, yeah, yes.
So in other words, is there some notion that there's going to possibly be a limit put on ultimately how many places, or could every single resident of Tremont cash in, get their million dollars and leave and turn the entire town into short-term rentals?
We're not there yet.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not.
We're not even close to that yet.
A slight exaggeration, but the implication that it's a possibility, if there, if there is no notion that there is going to be a limit. So is there some notion that depending upon the relationship between how many of these things are out there and the impact, that there will be at some point in the future, a limit on how many of these permits are going to be issued?
We're not discussing a limit of this stuff. That's all I can answer for you. This is not, this is not a limiting discussion. All we're doing is, you know, this is about collecting data. So anything else would be?
Yeah, I, I think what Mary just said is kind of a valid question that relates to the notion of if there is a effort to track how many of these things are and how many are issued, at some point, is there going to be a control on ultimately how many? I mean, that's typical, that's what Bar Harbor's doing.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, at this point, there's not, I don't know what more you want me to say to that, but there's none.
In case you haven't noticed, this, this isn't Bar Harbor.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out what will work best for our town, not what will work best in Bar Harbor or Mountain Desert or Selfless Park. We're looking for what will work best for the town of Tremont. Tremont is different. Every town is different on this island, so that's what we're looking into.
Well, I just want to interject if I may. We're different in character historically in what happens here, but I would argue that the trends of monetizing the resources for tur, the tourism business is catching up here. It's taken a couple of decades longer than it has in other parts of the island. So I think it's reasonable to assume that we're going to face at some point the same issues that these other people or the other towns are having.
Okay, Jeanne, did you have?
Well, I just.
You speak your name first, please.
My name is Jane Ashford, and the way I look at this is, the select board runs the business of the town. There's lots of businesses in the town, but the business of everybody in this town is managed by the select board. That's why we elected you guys. How you guys make decisions for what's going to happen in the future is based on how many residents we have, how many residents we're likely to have, you know, do we need to put X amount of money into the schools? We're talking about building a public safety building. How many spaces is that going to need to accommodate people who have to sleep there, because we don't have enough people to volunteer for the fire department or the ambulance service? There's lots of business decisions that are related to how much of the town is residents who live in their homes, and how much of the town is residents who are here for a week and then they're gone. And, and they really don't contribute to the running of the town. And if we're not going to have them on a year-round basis to help us run the town, then how do we meet those needs? And that's information that I think would be useful to the select board to have.
Anybody else? Yes.
Lynette Baker.
Lauren.
This is actually an additional question for you. In, in this one, it talks about dwellings, are we talking also about campers, tent sites, what are, yeah?
I gotta read the definition. I think the dwelling, the dwellings are as would be defined in the land ordinance. That's a great question to clarify. So I'll have to do some, I'll have to see whether or not that's worth putting something separate during the draft. That's a great question.
Thanks.
Yep.
Yes, Keith Corson, just a comment. From, from what I hear, it sounds like mostly, or a lot of people are concerned about long-term housing, long-term rentals, you know, local people. And I, I think you brought it up before, that at least now it's encompassing everything, but there is a difference between somebody coming in and buying a home and buying a year-round home and leaving, and just renting out that home, short-term rental, versus someone coming here and living in a place, well, I'll tell you my situation, it makes more sense. We moved here quite a few years ago, bought a home that has a summer rental. That cannot be used for year-round rental, it just can't. It's not, it's not capable of it, you know, and I think there's a big difference between those two types of properties, seasonal properties versus year-round properties. And of course, I have a vested interest in that, so I'm going to say that.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Keith. My name's David Edison. This is the first meeting that I've heard, there's going to be a distinction between seasonal rental and year-round rentals. I mean, that's huge. And there's a significant difference. The other thing I'd like to comment on is how the town gets out to people. I, I know people that, you know, we're all here, but vast number of people that rent don't or not have no clue, you know, that this is even going on, you know, short of going down the tax records and literally sending out a, you know, notice to everybody to register. I think we'll miss people, so just two comments, particularly the seasonal, I'm glad to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, and I envision that we would be sending out to, to every taxpayer, just to be sure that didn't lose anybody, perhaps, yes. Yes.
My name's Jamie Kane. I, I just wanted to point out something just about past experience. I feel like that short-term rentals could possibly become more of a scapegoat or something, because, you know, you have, you have a neighbor that, you know, deals with his neighbor, and his neighbor's like, you know, not the greatest guy in the world, and he has trouble, but he deals with him. He deals with him because he lives with him. But a short-term rental, you possibly could have the neighbor that just doesn't like the fact that, you know, there's people coming in and out, so they're going to single them out. And I just feel like that possibly, if you open the door to, you know, criticizing the people that have short-term rentals, it could, other, other people could feed on it and actually hurt them. That's all. I don't know, do you understand what I mean? Just by, this guy has a short-term rental, so their neighbor for some reason doesn't like him, and he says, well, every time he has a short-term rental, I'm going to complain. And then he gets hung. And it's, it seems like it could be a problem for people.
And, and that's one thing that I've thought of personally, is how will we control that from happening? You know, if there's a, a neighbor who, who doesn't care for someone's short-term, you know, renting, if they call every week, say, there's an issue, there's an issue, you know, that's something that we, we really haven't discussed yet. And it's something that I'm not sure we will be able to figure out until it happens, because, you know, hopefully people are, are pretty honest with it, and hopefully they are, their actual legitimate concerns that they have for safety. And that's, I think that's, like Keith had said earlier, that's the biggest thing for me as well, is safety. Just making sure everyone has the fire extinguishers they need, the smoke alarms they need, the address is on the building so that if emergency services has to, have to come there, you know, they're, they're pretty basic things is what I think we're looking for. Yes, Whit?
Whit Nigden, yeah. The, make a comment on the gentleman, Brian, you know, if you have a short-term neighbor that has a bonfire and has a big wildfire, you can call the cops if it's, you know, if it's noisy. It's just like everybody else, it's not like they have special privileges. You know, if they're breaking, if they're disturbing the peace, you call the cops. There's nothing you can, like penalize the guy that owns the house, you know. If you have a neighbor and you don't worry, he's gone in three days. You know, it doesn't happen every weekend, doesn't happen every week. Second question I'd like to know is, what about these people that rent the houses just in the summer, it's their primary dwelling, but they go to Schmuggler's Dan for the camping, and they rent the house to help pay for the taxes? You know, there's a lot of people that don't do that.
Yep.
Is that, do they have to pay this extra fee, and is their house still under the tax break, you know?
Homestead.
Homestead exemption.
You know, does that qualify, or do they have to forfeit that bill? So, if they're a short-term rental?
I don't believe that they would, they would not have to, you know, forfeit that, but was there a differentiation?
There's no, in this version, there's no distinction between somebody who's, who's, is their primary resident and they just goes Schmuggler's Dan, or somebody who doesn't live there and just wants it out. I think this version.
Like I said, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for feedback, so that we can, if the board feels that there need to be any changes made, this is the time to make them. That's why we're doing this, so. Yes, sir.
I have a question about the document, which I admit, you know, I haven't had enough time to read. But I'm sorry. Well, I, I hear a lot about the, the motivation behind these ordinance is to gather data and just wanting people to raise their, their rentals so that the town can know, hard facts, hard numbers about how many there really are. But I think the element of the licensing is something a little different than just registration. The licensing, I think, implies a control instrument for the town to license you or not, based on something that I don't think is defined in the ordinance as it is. So I think if one, we want is to have people register their rentals. Is there a way to just help people register their rentals instead of applying for a license, that you have to review on a schedule and be subject to fees and maybe inspectors or things like that, that actually are really more allowed with the existing ordinance?
I'll speak from my own personal. I, I sat in on one of the planning board meetings, and I believe when they had this discussion, they were afraid if they did not put some sort of a, you know, dollar value or a registration to this, then people just would not register and they would not get accurate data. They, they felt like this would be a way that they would get the data the best, you know, that, that they would get accurate data, I should say. That was their discussion.
Can I just, what I think you're asking, and just to summarize, is why not use the term registration as opposed to the term license? Because they have different, they could potentially have different meanings in the legal sense, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I feel like.
License sounds like it's a little more. Yeah, so I think the guidance that we got when we talked about developing this was to try to use the term license. I mean, there, it is a registration ordinance, but we're using the term licensing in the ordinance, because it creates a kind of a tighter ordinance structure. It's the same result.
Would you advise that it implies that there is some control already built into it by the town?
Yeah, I understand.
Maybe certification to not, to like?
To not issue a license. Yeah, and I think that does, this does provide the town the ability to not issue a license if there are violations to the ordinance.
Kevin?
The discussions we've had, you know, again, we haven't set prices, but we're not looking at anything that's going to generate a lot of income. Basically, we want the fees to be low enough so people aren't going to refuse to pay them. I mean, we're looking at a pretty minimal cost. And, and the other thing this will do, it'll give us an, you know, hopefully a pretty accurate count of the number of rentals in town, so we have some basis, you know, to understand if it's an issue or it isn't, or what kind, if it is an issue, how large is it? And we get, people are agreeing to some basic safety and sanitation, you know, if they're going to have a rental. That's what the licensing is going to do. We're not going to, this, this doesn't try to cap them, it doesn't try to tell you if you didn't grow up here, you can't do it. It's just kind of an accounting and a little bit of getting hosts, you know, landlords to agree to a certain standard. Very. to agree to a certain standard, a very basic reasonable standard. That's what this is about.
My name's Bridget. Will you be, will the questionnaire have the information? Excuse me, someone else mentioned, if it is a year-round resident versus a summer, a person who comes and goes, is that going to be on the questionnaire? Will you be able to gain that information?
Yes.
Yeah, we're pointing to.
On the application form, those types of things will be on there, yes.
One of the concerns we've heard, that I think is one of the most valid ones, is putting too many people in a house that's well beyond what a septic can handle. This is Tremont, there's no municipal sewerage and water, so everyone's got a private septic system. Some of them are pretty close to the neighbors. It's a very reasonable expectation not to have that system overloaded for the entire rental season. You know, that's something I think this could clarify. You know, that's one of the issues that have been mentioned, this would help identify if that is a legitimate problem. So, you know, that's what we're looking for, is that type of information. This isn't a big regulatory, big brother move to restrict what everyone can do.
Yeah.
Jamie Kane, I hear exactly what you're saying, and that I actually agree with safety. And I'm just wondering, to put a lot of these people at ease, maybe you could add something in the document that basically said that it was not to regulate, and that the license was not to regulate it in certain ways. I don't know exactly what I'm saying, but I am saying that we're not, in order to move this further, we have to do this. That might put people at ease.
I think to answer that question, is fundamentally part of your town process, like you can't change the rules without saying, "We're going to change the rules."
So, you don't find the document at all unopen-ended?
It, well, I understand what you're trying to say. I guess what I'm saying is, in order to change this ordinance, if this ordinance even gets to town meeting and gets adopted through town meeting, we have to go through this whole process again, just to change this document.
I understand, but that's just, I was just saying that if you close some doors, it might melt, that's all.
Yes?
Lynette Baker, if this does pass, in order to make changes in the future, would you, like, propose an addendum and then go through this process again? There'd be a hearing? Okay, just, thank you.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, but any major changes like that have to go to town vote for any of this. This is nothing that can be decided by just the board.
I would also add that to Jamie's comment, Jamie's comment about adding something to it, that too could be amended, so it's not, that's not permanent, you could amend it. The town vote could amend and take those out.
Change it back, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
We keep hearing, always like affordable housing residents taking away, people taking away from, people being able to be year-round. How does tracking short-term rentals solve that problem? Because we hear that all the time. So, how does tracking whether my house is a short-term rental or not solve that problem?
It doesn't. It just gathers information.
They keep using that phrase, affordable housing, you want to be able to have people be able to afford to buy houses here. But I don't see how tracking what people are doing with their homes, because if you track it and you decide that I can't do a short-term rental anymore, I'm going to have to sell to the highest bidder, and I'm going to have to move. So, I don't see how that, all this tracking stuff, all makes sense to me. I figured that out again.
Like Kevin said, I think we're just trying to collect data. I do agree as well, I think there should be a lot of data collected, such as how many seasonal homes there are that are not year-round residents, and, you know, how many year-round residents there are. You know, I think a lot of things, like Jane said earlier, you know, what's the difference between an Airbnb, their contribution to, like, your school system, like you said, young families, bringing them in, feeding, getting the, putting children in school. A summer residence is not providing that as well, so. I think there should be, you know, it's, it is a good question, I think there's a lot of data that could be collected, but this is, you know, this is what we're collecting right now.
Yes?
I think that's a really good question, and a question that a lot of people ask. Short-term rentals do contribute to the lack of affordable or year-round housing in places like this, because it's a desirable place, and it takes a unit off the market that would be otherwise used for a year-round house, either a rental or something else. I'm not saying it's a bad investment, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. This ordinance, what something like this does is tells you to what degree that is a problem in a town like Tremont. And if it is, great, we have the data to do that. If it isn't, great, we understand that it's not a problem. The point of the conversation, I think, is to try to understand when this particular use becomes out of balance with what you want as a community. So, that's the reason why you get the data. But there is a lot of evidence that shows that short-term rentals can contribute to lack of affordability or lack of year-round availability in communities. And so, instead of being anecdotal about it, something like this will do, is give you the hard data to say, "Yeah, here's what's happening." But it is not the only reason why there is an affordability or lack of year-round housing on MBI. It's a problem with many facets, and there's a lot of different work that's going on in that. This is really only why I think about it as like a, you know, my wife is a pie maker, so I always have to go back to pie and howl, so this is like a very small sliver in a much bigger pie. It's the reason why you're getting, that's what you do, I think, it's, it's data that helps you make informed decisions.
Thank you. I'm not sure who first. Josh?
Well, Josh, I'm just, like, concerned that it's getting put on a short-term rental, but really, the affordable housing around here has been picking up for years with just what the properties were. And as locals trying to hold on to our properties, and we have to compete with that in the tax base, you know, I think, I get that you're trying to collect data, but that, like Noel said, is not all the data that's contributing to the affordable housing around here in Tremont. When you see a house that's worth a hundred and fifty thousand, you're on the market for seven hundred and fifty thousand, but, and somebody buys it? You know, somebody will buy it. That's, that seems like more problem than the locals trying to reschedule seasonally to help their income to stay here, keep their kids here, you know? It's hard, and everybody knows that, but it's hard. So, it's kind of like, are we saying there is going to be an ordinance, and we're trying to find out what's in it, or do we give a vote on whether we even want one? You know, I don't, at least there's people deciding we need one, but what if everybody else in town decided we didn't? I don't know where that goes. You know, decided this is a thing that we need, or is that what the vote is about? It sounds like we're just saying what's going to be in it, but that would imply we've already determined there is going to be one.
I guess our process is, we had the, we had the planning board write this ordinance up. We want to have a public hearing to get input, because there's really, it's very hard to get input on something that's, whether you want one or not, and there's too many variables. You need to have something to look at to be able to say, "Yes, this is something we want," or "No, we don't." If the select board did decide to put this, you know, they did say, "Okay, we want this, this is our stamp of approval on it," then it still does go to vote. So, yeah, this is nothing that the select board decides, so voters vote on it no matter what. That answers your question, okay.
It's just not overall, like, we're trying to figure out what goes in it, but I don't know, just curious.
Yes?
All right, you could, again, just to offer a little bit of perspective, as a non-homeowner and a renter, I've been here for a decade, I am a longtime Canadian resident, I'm from the state, I've chosen this as my community. The first apartment that I had here went from a long-term, full-year rental to a short-term Airbnb. And it was by the grace of my then employer to offer me a camper to live in, and then by the grace of some local and some of my regular bar customers, I got a really good deal on my rental. Whether or not I'm happy in that rental, if I wanted to leave and continue to live in this community, I am unable to find another full-time rental. I, unless I live with six other people crammed into a tiny little place where we can't afford the rent, a one-bedroom apartment is going for twenty-five hundred dollars plus utilities, which is unsustainable for just normal working-class people. And I would also like to buy a house, and now the price is going up, I can't do that. So, I am stuck in the apartment that I live in, I cannot move out unless I move off island. And then, am I making the commute to and from work? Do I have to find another job? So, that's just the input from a renter's perspective. It is, it is cutthroat, it's difficult out there. Go on to any of the housing hubs on Facebook. You have people that are coming here as travel nurses, they want to work at the labs, and they're thinking, "Oh, I'll just put a thing on Facebook and I'll get all of these apartment listings, people will just help me find a place." And the locals that want to stay here, live here, work here year-round, I'm not even trying to be here just in the summer and leave in the wintertime, like, I want to live here forever. And it's really, really difficult. And I'm not blaming it all on the short-term rentals, but it's certainly not helping. So, that's just my perspective, my little anecdote, if any of you want to keep it just in the back of your minds.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
How many here? Maine is the state in the nation with the most affordable housing of all the entire nation, yes, so. There could be a component that rentals are, there's, there is a component of that problem, there is about rentals, but we know that there are very wealthy people here that have no one house but islands, that they never come to visit. Maybe we should start looking there first.
Well, one of the things I'm hoping to see out of this is get an understanding of how many of these properties are owned by people that live here and people that don't, people that just purchase them and use them for a rental investment. To me, that's a whole different category. I mean, if someone's living here and they're making, you know, they're affording to be here because they've got a short-term rental, that's not the same category as someone from California buying twelve properties and turning them all into short-term rentals. Hopefully, that's one of the things we're going to get information on out of this process. That's the kind of thing we're looking to find out. And I don't think there's any of us, me particularly anyway, that don't believe that short-term rental is contributing to this. It is. I don't think it's the main factor that makes housing affordable or difficult to find. I think there's a lot of factors, but it definitely contributes. It would be nice to know how much it contributes to it, or get a feel for that.
David, my neighbor, is this exaggeration to say that...
All right, hang on, sir, hang on, please. I had, there's people in the back that have been holding up their hand for a long time. Okay, yes, ma'am, in the back there, in front of O.C.C.B. I'm not, sorry.
My name's Lesley, and we don't have property ownership. To your point, um...
Sorry, we can't hear you back, at least I can't.
To your point that you were just discussing about the different types of property owners, and to this gentleman Keith's point, we're not here all year-round, but we're here a lot, and we have fixed the property up and done huge improvements on it, we, so we definitely benefit in the community by that. Not only that, we have two houses on our property, one of them is rented full-time all year-round to a young man who's a fisherman, his rent is very low compared to what this other person I was telling him was telling me about. So, you know, we are happy to have him there, he's happy to be there, we have a great relationship in that, and we're not there, he watches things out for us, but we also rent our little place, ours is smaller than his, and we just like being here. But we picked the smaller house because financially, that's what works for us, and his rent is super low, considering that he has a larger home than we do, and he's happy there, we're happy to have him next door. So, we're a different kind of owner, and I hope that if you go through these ordinance, to your point, gentleman, flat shirt up on a desk, that you look and say, "I agree with you totally that when someone from a different place buys up a whole bunch of housing, they didn't even care about this community, they don't live here, they don't even come here." That's not necessarily a good thing for Tremont, but we do care about this place, even though we don't live here twelve months out of the year. That's all I have to say.
All right, yes, the, yes?
Colonel Shaper, I just had a question about how you're getting this survey or this information out to all the property owners, because you said it was going to be, it sounds like it's going to be a mass mailing to everybody on the tax list. I believe that people don't bother to fill out surveys and send them back. I know you initially said you're targeting just the people who do rentals, but you've also said you want to collect data from everybody to find out who lives here year-round, you know, what are they doing with their properties? Maybe you'll get the people who have rentals to return their forms, because they think they won't be able to rent if they don't, but how are you going to get the information from everybody else? If you truly want to get all that information, what's the plan to get the rest of it?
I don't remember us saying we're sending out surveys.
Well, you're not sending out surveys, you're sending out a notice to people that you are requiring people who rent to register.
Okay.
If this happens, that's what you said you want to do, but in another thought, you said you want to know, what is our housing stock a hundred percent, so we know who lives here year-round, who, like the lady in the back, lives here seasonally and so forth. How are you going to get that information? If that's what you want, that's not addressed here.
I don't believe...
But it sounds like you said you wanted it, because you said you're collecting data, and that's data that you need in order to come up with your plan. It's not just data about people who rent, it's data from everybody.
I think she's referring to what I said earlier about, it's hard, you know, there's a lot of different factors in the housing market and seasonal homes, and, you know, there's a, there are many diff, this, what we're looking at right now, what we're talking about tonight, is just for the short-term rentals. I don't disagree that there shouldn't be something, but this, this is not, it's not included in this, I guess would be the clear strike, that's what I'm... Is that, okay, Noel?
Yeah, just, what I heard was, how are, the question earlier was, how are people going to know that if they're not from here, that this ordinance is going to be potentially voted on, or if it does get adopted, is it in place that they have to do it? And what the answer was, we're going to send everybody a mailing that says, "Tremont is adopted."
Can you hear you?
If you're a short-term rental, this is what you need to do. So, one of them is specific to this ordinance, not the larger context of the question they're asking, but if anybody's really interested in current data on your community, the town has just updated its comprehensive plan, and there's lots of awesome statistical data that, if you're super fired up about statistics, or you're having a little bit of trouble sleeping, and you want to read some... But in all seriousness, the comprehensive plan just got adopted, it hasn't been adopted...
It hasn't been adopted, yeah.
...interviewed with the state, and there's a lot of good goals and policies in the comprehensive, so everybody should check it out.
And that's the link right up on the counter, please.
Yes, yeah, there it is.
Is there any other comments? Yes?
Sorry, Lynette Baker, just a quick question, I may have missed it. I heard some people asking about fees, and we don't know what, about anything. Will we know, like, what the registration or licensing fee will be before we vote on this?
Yes, and after Jesse explained last time that there will be, if the select board does decide to put a fee, you know, what the amount will be, then we will have another public hearing like this before it ever gets sent to voters.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just when we talked about the rental being so expensive to rent around here, how does limiting short-term rentals take care of that problem? So that it would be affordable for people who pay a certain twelve hundred dollars a month, the rent's at twenty-five, how does limiting short-term rentals take care of that problem?
We're not talking about limiting...
If there's more apartments to rent, then it's going to be more competitive pricing, whereas if there are fewer apartments to rent, then people can be like, "Well, I can either make fifteen hundred dollars a week renting my weekly rental, or I can make a thousand dollars a month." You know, like, the choice is easy there, whereas if it's a surplus of people with long-term rentals, because there's only a certain, if they put a cap on it, for example, and all the short-term rentals are taken up, all the spots, and the rest are, now you have to have a long-term rental, then it's going to make the housing more affordable for people that have to rent. It's going to make it a more competitive cost.
I don't think it's going to work that way, because if I'm trying to make a living, or trying to make this so I can stay here, I'm going to still charge you twenty-five hundred dollars a month. I'm going to still charge you $2,500 a month. You're not going to count my rent at $4,000. I don't believe anybody is.
I'm not saying putting a cap on how much the rental is.
No, short-term rentals.
Right, no, no, no.
On that.
Yeah, no.
So you make more year-round rentals, which I don't see how that would solve the problem if the idea is to, I need to make certain amount of money to be able to stay here. I'm not going to rent, I'm not going to, not going to give you a break on that. So I just want to count that all. But in the end, I can hear what's happening. There's going to be a cap on short-term rentals. And how you decide who can and who cannot is going to be a problem. But that's kind of the end game is the short-term, the capping on short-term rentals. That's kind of the end of the 36.
Like we've said before, and I'll say again, that is not our goal. Our goal is not to do that. This is not, I explained how we got to this point. And we are, our goal is not to restrict anybody, put a cap on anybody. We're simply, we're asked to collect data. That's where we are.
And you would register for license year-to-year?
Yes, yeah. There was someone over here with their hand, or maybe, sorry, sir?
No, I didn't hear that. Pete Corson.
Okay.
I just heard that you guys wouldn't stay.
Okay, yeah. I just want to make sure I didn't forget. Do I start up a little?
And to assure a certain level of safety and sanitation.
Okay, yes.
I want to, I just want to sort of give a snapshot.
Yeah, me, me.
Mark Fink, I'm sorry. I just want to give a snapshot of not what could happen, but what has happened already. And so I think the road that I live on is sort of a case study of what the potential consequences and concerns are and things like that. And I think this goes to record to your question and your worries about the connection between what you have to pay in order to live here versus the competitiveness, if you will, for a limited housing supply, which I think is a very, very valid argument. So in about the three to four years since the first house that was purchased, which just still happened to be right next to my house, and was implemented as a short-term rental, I think we're pretty close. We're approaching 50% of all the houses on my road being converted over to short-term rentals. If I'm not mistaken, that includes even a lot that you purchased that you were thinking about putting in a rental at some point. Is that not so? Not trying to put you on the spot or anything, but I'm saying that is a very popular location for...
I definitely have not put a rental on it. But, and I would like to see the 50%, because I can't, I mean, I've been here...
I said it's approaching.
Oh, okay.
So in that time, and that's unfortunately Dave ducked down because he's a neighbor, but in that time, we have seen the prices of homes basically double. They basically doubled. And of course, you know, for the people that are selling them, that's great. But the people who want to stick around and have to pay the higher taxes, not to mention the other implications that go along with it, maybe not so great. Now, anybody here can go online. They can go to Airbnb and VRDO and whatever, and they can type in rentals on Bass Harbor Woods Road. And people talk about $1,000, $2,000 a month. I'm telling you, these places are going $1,000 to $2,000 a night. So why would somebody who has a home that they're thinking of, well, I need to put this into the stock for some income generation? Why in the world would they even begin to think about renting it out to somebody who's trying to scratch together and afford rent so that they can have a job that doesn't necessarily pay them $100,000 plus a year? I mean, it's, you see what I'm saying? You are literally affecting the stock that's there, you know? And it's not the situation now, but it's definitely starting to happen on my worthy.
Um, I'd like to correct your comment too about my land on Bass Harbor Woods. I purchased that because I've lived here. My family has for generations. And that property abuts the land where my house is. So that's why I bought it, was for my kids in the future. That was not for a rental, so. I've seen a lot of people come in. A lot of things change around here. I actually remember when Bass Harbor Woods Road was put in. So I remember when it wasn't even there. And my family has land that abuts against there. So that was a big change as well, you know, seeing all those houses get put in there. Any other comments? Yes, cool.
Tony Rich? The 36 people who pulled a letter, why isn't that available to the dudes there?
I believe it is, uh, he asked, why isn't the letter available that the 36 people who signed to come in? And I believe it is public knowledge. It is at the town office. Anytime anyone would like to see it, they can come in and get a copy. Is there any other comments? There's no more comments. I think I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:16.
I bet the next public hearing doesn't get as much response.
Now, Ben. All right, next we have a public hearing on general assistance ordinance.
Anybody? Anybody?
Randy, is Kevin?
What's that? Um, let me, I'll want to speak to him.
All right, public hearing on general assistance ordinance. I would like to open the public hearing at 6:18. Do we have any questions or comments on the public, on the general assistance ordinance? All right, seeing none, I will close at 6:18. All right, approval of minutes.
Do you want to approve the ordinance? The general assistance ordinance? Yeah, okay. I didn't, it's not on the regular agenda, so I thought we're probably doing it now. I make a motion to adopt and sign the annual amendment to appendices A through H for the general assistance ordinance.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt and sign the annual amend, amendment of appendices A through H of the general assistance ordinance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have approval of minutes. Is the minutes from Monday, October 2nd?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2023.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the minutes from October 2nd, 2023. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to abstain. I missed that meeting.
Okay, Kevin abstains. Approval of warrant. We have from fiscal year '23, we have warrant 137 for $11,375. From fiscal year '24, we have warrant 30 for $4,980.15, 31 for $11,976.04, and 32 for $185,060.64.
I make a motion to approve warrant 137 from fiscal year '23 and warrants 30 through 32 for fiscal year '24.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant 137 from fiscal year '23 and warrants 30 through 32 fiscal year '24. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next we have financial reports.
Okay, so these reports are as of September 30th, which is 25% of the way through fiscal year. In September, we collected $3,551,405 in property taxes, bringing total collections of the year to 89.64% of the budget. Uh, we also collected $48,438 in motor vehicle excise tax, resulting in total collections of 30.23% of what was captured. We received $876 in registration agent fees, 727 employment permits, 567 in building permits, and 1,180 in checking interest in September. For the war fund, we received $25,280 in use fees, $1,000 in garage rent. And in the harbor fund, we received $1,314 in transient float rental. On the expense side of things, administration's cost center is running under budget at 22.57%. We had additional expenses of 568 for office equipment, $1,922 in attorney's fees, 791 in advertising, $2,247 in software, and $3,721 in repairs and maintenance. This included the bill for the water damage this past winter to the meeting room and the boiler, which insurance has reimbursed us for minus $5,000. You'll see the expense of $138,210 for the fire department's annual appropriation. In the public works cost center, we are under budget at 16.14% of the budget. Some notable expenses included $1,193 in colors and signs, $1,956 in repairs, which included tires for trucks 3 and 9, class of having truck 9 tow to a van war. We also had $3,176 in summer gas and diesel that included the $28,000 for the fuel tank in truck 6. The solid waste cost center, we had expenses of $15,617 to EMR, $8,941 in ticket fees, and $2,114 in recycling. And on the general ledger side of things, we received $13,247 in revenue sharing from the state, bringing total receipts for FY '24 to $41,277, or 25% of what was pledged for the year. Uh, in the operating reserve, you'll also see a reduction of $3,423 that included the permanent radar sign that you authorized installing in harbor.
Sun looks good, by the way.
Yeah. Only thing I wish it flashed. You know, when they, when the other one would flash, that blue or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. I make a motion, excuse me. I make a motion to accept the July 2023 through September 2023 financial reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the July 2023 through September 2023 financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have regular business. Versant Power easement. And thank goodness after that long session that Dave brought a checkbook with him. It's a great thing.
That was interesting.
Yeah.
I'm on the planning with the town of...
Oh, you are, yeah.
So land use zoning.
Yes.
And Greg going through that in Montezero.
I know, affordable housing is such an issue. It's such a, yes. Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
All right. So what would you like now? You want me to, I mean, yeah. Is there anything you can think in the future you might want so that we can do it now or?
No, it's probably will be.
Okay, yeah.
I think he just likes hanging out here.
I think he does. I think he misses us and he comes down every couple weeks. Yeah.
They're supposed to, have they been there this week? They've been, they're supposed to. They did some work at the sub-site.
Yeah, okay.
Some rain, but they haven't set up the pole work this weekend. It's scheduled for staff this week.
Yeah, I haven't seen anybody there. So you just need another easement for a pole anchor as all of this, but yeah.
Right up here.
Yep. Very simple, pole anchor, I know.
I got no issues with that.
Made him sit through all that just for that.
It was educational. He just...
All right, go back there and tell them what you're going for.
Yeah, that's right.
I make a motion to approve and sign the easement between the inhabitants of the town of Tremont and Versant Power for the easement for a pole anchor at lot 33, shown on map number 14 of the town of Tremont.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the easement between the inhabitants of the town of Tremont and Versant Power for an easement for a pole anchor on lot number 33, shown on text map 14 for the town of Tremont. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I thought you had something first, Tony.
The order was right.
Yeah. All right, and we have to sign this now. Okay. All right, I'll keep rolling. Next we have the Public Safety Building Committee. I know this is something that we have talked about before having, forming a committee if we are going to start thinking seriously about building a public safety building sooner than later. And I think basically we'd like to see if you guys think there should be one and who we should include roughly on that.
Oh, makes sense to me.
Yeah, thinks it's a good idea.
I know, just thinking about it briefly before the meeting. And if we did, I think obviously you want to have a couple of people from the fire department.
Then, you want them involved?
Yeah. Maybe someone from the ambulance service. I know that's going to be harder, but even a volunteer for the ambulance service. Just someone who has some experience with how things work and what they have to go through to get an ambulance in and out. Should really have someone from the select board. And I thought the planning board, just because of issues that might come up, is whether you could build this year or couldn't build this year. And then obviously you're going to want someone at large or multiple at large.
You should have some members of the public.
I know that seems like a lot already of people, but...
Yeah, yep.
Any input, fire department? Either fire department members?
Well, I, so when Millard was the town manager, we did a capital improvement for the community. They did, I stopped at the community hall here and gave $75,000 to each building or create new fire stations. So, and at that time, we identified that it would be in the 20, 30 range that we'd have to be thinking about either modifying existing buildings or creating new buildings. So I guess it would be, we'd start looking into what could we build up. I don't know, still seven, six and a half year window, but we should start getting the whole thing. And I, my thought was to, what you said, I, you said someone at large, like Ben Harper, and he came home from college and we can help build that station. He is a good foundation. Just people like that, that have some input on what it takes to do it, but, um, yeah, so I think if you could ask, Yes, like, I think if he has, uh, collective people, because now we're giving all the land away to paying for high cost.
Yeah, I know. We keep giving little pieces. That's what he, he's taking like a foot to a time is what he's doing.
It'd be nice to identify what properties would work.
Yes.
Or if the existing properties are modified or, I don't know.
And I thought of Roger for the same reason, like Rogers could with land and where a septic can go, how much it would take to supply this and, you know, I think. Yeah, and like you said, Ben, that's.
So I, forming a committee here, I thought the, um, board of fire departments thinking that, uh, we could use some of the money that's been set aside to hire a consulting company or firm to start getting us, I mean, not like with the school. But to start. Uh, any given, any bendable assessment of what, I mean, Orland and some of these fire departments are paying three and a half million dollars for the fire stations. I mean, and I guess it'd be nice to know what we're up against. So if we're doing the twenty million dollar school, three and a half, three and a half.
The budget got cut on the school?
Just a smidge, just a little bit.
That's a good, that's the price range there, so. But, um, so just so we could start projecting, um, costs and location and.
How about I get you a pad of paper, pencil, and a calculator and we can figure out what we need and then.
I know, but it's something, some merit to someone who has projected my names. But definitely has to be an engineer that.
Yes.
If it's going to be any federal money over a hundred grand or something, whatever the magic number is, so it has to be done correctly.
Yep.
If the lot we have isn't, if we have to build two stories, the lot we have would be cheaper to build a single store and something else. I could work that out way ahead of time.
Yep.
I'd try to time it or go, it's a bit, kind of, you would bring to the select board at the time.
Sounds good.
And that would also help in the future try to figure out what, uh, the Tremont existing buildings and structure of.
Yep.
And the ownership and how you can build properties where it goes and.
Yep.
What it contributes to.
Great. Um, did you guys have any opinion on, just, I just threw those numbers off the cuff, but if you had a couple of, uh, fire department members, ambulance service, um, say two at large, um, I think, you know, usually a select board just to be sure, you know, just.
I think they're similar if they're at large or if, if, if.
Yeah, and then a planning board member just to, to kind of keep them in the loop and, and also what can be done with everything.
Yeah, because they can have subcommittees that work with each other.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, no, I just, I mean, it seems like a long ways out, but to get a start, planning, I think, for.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Did you say, I was busy in the beginning, two fire?
Two fire, one ambulance service, can be a volunteer as well, because I know, just, um, just for instance, Gene's husband. If he, you know, someone who, who, who moves the ambulance in and out and understands how stuff, you know, what it takes to.
Our son and his husband doesn't do that.
Oh, he doesn't? Well, someone like that is what I mean, you know, someone who.
We mentioned to Andy and he was like, I don't, you'd be part of more committees.
There's the, the nursing service board to the pharmacy, so.
Yep.
But they might not be residents, right? So can we make it, it doesn't have to be a Tremont resident?
Right.
Not limited to just, yeah, okay.
For the ambulance service, it does not have to be.
Well, I think any of them, I mean, that we might want to.
Well, the at-large members maybe you want.
We could just say at-large Tremont residents.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Put the rest of them.
Okay.
Um, so two fire, two at-large Tremont residents, one ambulance, ambulance service rep, one select board, one planning board.
Mm-hmm.
That's set.
Perfect.
Good.
I think that would cover it, I mean, because.
I wouldn't mind being on it for the select board if everyone approved.
Yeah, on the main.
Yep.
It seems like a big number, but you need, you'd still have full people for a lot, you know, that would be considered, so that's, that's a good number of people.
Yep.
Yeah, I have a little more experience with that. I don't say how old you are, but I'm saying how old it is.
No, that's good, and I've seen with the, the school, um, I'm on the building committee with that, and so Keith is as well. And there's just a lot of different viewpoints from not just the school, but also from safety, from budget, from construction. You have an engineer on, you know, you could, you could, it's great to have a good wide variety of viewpoint, but. All right, anybody got a motion?
I've been doing all, all to do this one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to establish a public safety building committee and request the town manager to draft bylaws for the committee.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to establish a public safety building committee and to request the town manager to draft bylaws for the committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, uh, winter sand bids, winter sand, sand bids. We have, um, Doug Gott and Sons for nine dollars and eighty cents a yard, which is the same price as last year.
Yeah, I say we snag that.
Perfect.
Yeah. Anytime they say the same price as last year, you say, okay, let's go.
It was the same the year before, too.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, they did indicate it wouldn't be that next year.
Oh, sure, it won't be that next year.
I'll make a motion to award the FY twenty-four winter sand contract, Doug Garten's sons, with a price of nine hundred and eighty, nine dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Timmy might say thank you.
I want a little kickback to that.
Yeah. Who seconded that?
Me.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to award the FY twenty-four sand, winter sand contract to Doug Garten's sons for a price of nine dollars and eighty cents per cubic yard. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have cemetery lot sales. We have a, um, lot request from Brenda Fletcher, lot two in the Ridge Cemetery.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to sell lot two in the Ridge Cemetery to Brenda Fletcher.
Second.
Moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to sell lot two in the Ridge Cemetery to Brenda Fletcher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, town manager report. Jesse, make us snap.
I'll make it snappy. No, I guess, I forgot. All right, projects of interest. I attended MNA convention two days last week in Augusta. I did the workers' comp, uh, insurance renewal, conducted Harbor Master interviews, meeting prep, financial reports, onboarding of the new deputy CEO Katie Higgins, met with Dugus about finishing up the Dix Point Road project and worked on solar billing. Office staff clerk was busy with election prep, BNB reporting, and preparing for FY twenty-two tax foreclosure notices. Bookkeeper has been busy with FY twenty-three audit prep, and the CEO was busy onboarding, learning, studying. Public works, uh, garbage and cans were removed from the cemetery, back beach, mowed the town office trail, worked on the storage shed, patching on Bernard Road, Clark Point, Kellytown, the Flatiron Roads, worked on the pole patch bin, worked on the permanent radar sign, did some repairs to the John Deere, cleaned out the tent, put stuff in the storage shed, checked the roads Sunday after the storm, swapped out buckets on the case, new radar sign was installed on Harbor Drive, repaired washouts on Cape Road, cut a tree off Tremont Road, uh, ditching on Shore Road, repaired a washout on Rich Town, and truck one went to Ellsworth for maintenance, and truck two was back from Ellsworth for the winter season. Harbor Master was dealing with sailboat on the dock that would not leave, uh, replaced boards on the dock, general dock cleanup, permitting, um, permits being issued, money collected, and swapped out the electric and voice motor. Over the next few weeks, I will hopefully be making a Harbor Master decision, um, preparing and assisting the FY twenty-three audit and assisting the clerk with the election and the voting notices.
By, by the way, the, the ditching on Shore Road looks really good, and it is so overdue. It looks like they're doing a nice job. Yeah.
All right, uh, date of the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five P M.
Second.
Moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, five P M, town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah. Hope it's not. If you can't find it, get the right.